I have a prayer and I'm gonna ask Alderman Betts to use the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's go with our roll call.
Town of Vidalia, Board of Alderman, roll call for the regular meeting of the Board, the Mayor and Board of Alderman dated July 13th, 2021. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderwoman Denby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Mayor, let the record show that a quorum of the Board is present and accounted for.
Okay, thank you very much. First thing we need to do is there's two sets of minutes. One is for our special meeting that we held on Thursday of May the 20th, and there's one, our regular meeting, our special public meeting that we had for Thursday, May the 27th. Is there any questions or any corrections that need to be noted? If not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, second by Alderman Denby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Before we start into our public comments on our current agenda, I just want to reach out to the members of the Methodist Church. As y'all know, that was, it burned and we lost it in a fire Saturday morning. And it was, I went to church there till I was in high school and has a lot of sweet memories for me and a lot of people still go to church there. And I want to remember those members, you know, as they look for somewhere to recover and, you know. Those of us who are Christian, and I am, you know, we know that the church is the people. That's where the church resides at, in our hearts. But we want to remember these members as they try and maybe displaced. And anything we can do to help them, we certainly want to do that. Again, it's very, very sad to look at. As you go down Oak Street, that cross is there though, you know, and so it will be, that church will rise from the ashes, literally, I'm sure. And we want to keep those people in our prayers, and I just want to say that. So, anyway, anybody, this, we're at the public comment part of our agenda where if anybody has a comment on anything on our agenda, this would be the time they could say something unless you're on the agenda later on. You'll be involved in those discussions there. But has anybody from the public got any comments on the agenda?
Oh, about the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Okay. All right, if not, if not, yes, ma'am.
I'm Catherine Cartwright, y'all know. Sandy Kaye White asked me to present this letter to the Board of Alderman. She's not able to give it tonight, and she said to give this letter to Dawn.
Okay.
And be considered to be put on the agenda for next month, maybe.
Okay, so she wants to remove herself from the, for tonight, okay.
We need to be on here for her, so I just went ahead and did it.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Okay, thank you so much, Catherine. Okay. Yes.
We have Sophie Weber here, and we'd like to add her to the agenda.
Okay.
Just number four.
Okay, she's gonna be in y'all's presentation. I've got her in there with that. Okay, so that's, and I'm, we're gonna get to that here in just a few minutes. All right, so we're gonna go to the first thing on our agenda is our presentation of our financial statement from May. We're gonna give back to Ms. Deborah Moke, our CPA.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of May 31st, 2021, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the 11 months ending 5/31/21, a summary of budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all departments and Aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of 10.2 million, included restrictive funds of 8.4 million in the hydro fund, and 607,000 in sales tax fund. Investments are 3.9 million, which is 2.4 million in the hydro reserve fund, and 1.5 million in the general fund. Total assets are 39.2 million, total liabilities are 8.5 million, and the fund balance is 30.7 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the 11 months ending 5/31/21 indicates combined revenues of 32 million, or 89% of the total revenue, total expenditures of 30.7 million, or 91% of the total expenditures, for a change in net position of a positive 1.473 million. The positive change in net position is due to revenues are catching up with the timing of the expenditures with one month left to go. The negative position has turned around and we, and will continue to move in a positive direction. The budget was amended in May of 2021 and is now predicting an 820,000 increase in net position. Total expenditures are at 91% of the budget with one month to go, which is right on target. These financial statements also include a capital outlay of 3.1 million of a $3.4 million budget. These financial statements include approximately 375,000 for expenses for emergency work and debris removal during and after the winter storm. The insurance company denied any claims for damages, and we have submitted a request for public assistance through FEMA. A damage inventory report has been submitted to FEMA. All the categories are now open for reimbursement. The funding will be on a 75-25% basis. The town is expecting to receive $267,500 reimbursement. Everything has been submitted for category B, which is the emergency preparedness part, and the remaining projects will be submitted in July. The entire process will take a few more months to complete before we start receiving the funding. Jennifer has been spending many hours preparing and organizing all the documentation and has been instrumental in getting this funding. Through July 13th, approximately $3.8 million has been borrowed for the substation construction to cover materials, engineering costs, and legal fees incurred. The Aldermen have been notified before the draws are made so as, so as they can be aware of where the money is being spent. The town has saved a lot of money by procuring the materials prior to the pandemic. The appraisals are complete for the right-of-ways and negotiations are pending for the acquisition. Funds for the American Rescue Plan of 1.4 million to the town of Vidalia have not been received yet. We are expecting to receive this money any day now. The money must be spent over four years or returned. Eligible uses includes responding to the public health emergency, negative economic impacts, revenue loss due to the COVID-19 public health emergency, provide premium pay to eligible workers, and make necessary investments in water, sewer, and/or broadband infrastructure. This money will come in two equal payments over the next two years. The next hydro royalty payment the town will receive will be August the 1st in the amount of $4,719,000.
Okay, any questions on the financial report for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah, very much. Okay, number two, we have board discussion vote on the approval of occupational license. And the first one we have is the Fuel Track Papa Tees LLC. Is Mr. Campbell here? Okay, he's not here. As y'all know, Papa Tees been here a long time. Well, congratulations to the Taunt family for selling, and I guess they're gonna enjoy their retirement, so we wish them luck. And they've been in business a long time in Vidalia. Any questions on the applications? Do I hear a motion? We accept this application?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the next one we've got is Every Woman Boutique, Ms. Jacinta Walker. Is Ms. Walker here? She's not here? Okay, she's got a boutique and it's going to be at 201A Carter Street. And she is going to, it looks like it's, I assume it's gonna be clothing. Any questions on that? Do I hear a motion? We accept this application?
I don't think motion.
Okay. Ms. Denby, motion made by Mr. Alderman Denby. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one we got is Shee Shee Concoctions by Ms. Cheryl Bowman. Is Cheryl here?
Yes, sir.
Cheryl, come on, tell us a little bit about your.
Good evening, and it's actually Chef Foxtrot, Chef Shea Concoctions. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Yeah, sorry about that. I am a personal, a traveling personal chef. I create a big easy experience and allow, come into people's home and create a big easy experience specializing in New Orleans Cajun Creole, and I also have a diverse menu.
Okay, do you share any of your recipes or anything?
Absolutely, because you're gonna call me anyway.
Would you make that correct, make that correction on the name?
Yeah.
Because it's, it's that way on your application.
Yes, sir, I've been informed, yes.
No, I'm saying, would you tell us what it?
Oh, it's supposed to be Chef Charlie Hotel Echo Foxtrot Shea.
Okay, gotcha.
Chef Shea, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we wish you all the luck, and so will you have be putting out pamphlets of what all that you can?
Well, then, since you say that.
Okay. Well, good. Because I love some, some New Orleans cooking.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, no, thank you. All right, do I hear a motion? We accept this application?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Denby. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next one we have is a, this is a sign application by Robert Calhoun, who has Big Rob's Smoke Pit at 405 Martin Luther King. And you'll see his rendering of his sign on the second page. Is there any questions on that? Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept that sign?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Denby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we come to number four, presentation by the Viday Beautification Committee and the Viday Garden Club. And representing them here tonight is Ellen Yates and Cindy Galloway. But I do want to just say a little bit before they get started that I want to recognize Ms. Sophie Weber here. Sophie just graduated from Cathedral High School, and she came to my office several, I guess, a few months ago, and she had some wonderful ideas that she shared not only with me, but also with, with these ladies, both the respective clubs. And, and they have all embraced one another. I think they have some wonderful ideas that they're gonna be sharing and coming and asking us for some help with, maybe with the hydro funds, I think, with the, with the royalty monies that y'all might be doing some big improvements for our town. And I think it's wonderful that y'all are doing it. And so I was gonna get y'all to share, and Sophie as well, some of the things, the ideas that y'all had, that y'all are gonna want to be doing around town. And I hope very soon, so if y'all would want to go, I'm gonna turn it over to you three, and y'all can.
Okay, I'm Ellen Yates, but I think I know just about everybody in this room. I was raised here, lived here all my life, and my husband's David, he's a farmer. This, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about this committee and how it began. I'm a retired school teacher, and I had a wonderful paraprofessional in my room, and her name's Diana Rodriguez, and she's here. Diana, would you stand up? I'm sorry, I have to, I have to say this because she is my right arm. We had this little dream about what we're gonna do when we retire, and we both kind of had the same idea. We wanted to join in the community to help Vidalia become a more beautiful place. And so that's when the Vidalia Beautification Committee was born. And it just so happened that through our prayers and beliefs, that Buzz came into office and he wanted the same for our town. And we are very passionate about this. Now, we started our community, our club, four years ago, and we didn't have any money. And we, I went around asking for donations, and the town of Vidalia was so wonderful. And since Vidalia does not have a downtown, we thought it would be great to decorate the Courthouse Square, because that's our oldest building here. It's very historical. We got permission from the police jury, and so we started decorating. We have added to it every year, and we just love it. And we think it's making Vidalia a prettier place. We want to extend these decorations throughout town at Christmas. We want to help with the riverfront in any way we can. We are a volunteer group, and we're all in our 60s and 70s, so we, you know, we do the best we can. But we have fun doing it, and what, what we want to do next is, I was just gonna give you a few things that we do for our beautification committee. We, every year, we do the Christmas tour of homes. We have four, five, six beautiful homes that we sell tickets to. We make a little bit of money off of that. And everything we make goes to Vidalia, to beautify Vidalia. We do Christmas ornaments. We've started a collection. We have three. We skipped 2020 because of the COVID, and we want to do one for that and one for this year. We make our money that way. Also, we have, let's see, the tour of homes, that, and Christmas on Carter Street. Well, we don't make any money off of that, but we enjoy doing that because it makes our town more beautiful at Christmas. So, those are the four things that we're focusing on. But we've got a great, big project that we're so proud of, and we partner with this, with the Viday Beautiful, with the Viday Garden Club because we feel like being together will make us stronger and better because we're very passionate about beautifying Vidalia. Now, we're gonna be looking and seeking some of the money for, for the hydro plant to do this because we can't do it with our little piddly funds. We could if we could work harder, but there's not much you can do. But anyway, we will be seeking some funds from the hydro. But when you hear Sophie Weber's presentation, and this is all Sophie Weber's idea. She is majoring in landscape design at LSU, and she has thought of this wonderful project called Adopt a Spot. But I'm gonna let Cindy Galloway talk to y'all. She's president of the garden club, and she has some really good news to tell y'all and some good things to expect for Vidalia. By the way, we have 19 members now in our committee.
Wow, thank you, that's great.
Hi, Cindy Galloway. I have been president of the Vidalia Garden Club for about five years now. I've been a member of the beautification committee for going on three, going on three years. We want to work together, together.
A lot of the beautification committee members have joined with the garden club.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we want to be strong.
One, one reason we're really excited about this project is that Vidalia has been selected to host the State Garden Club Convention in 2023. So, in about two years, we've done a lot of the base work. We thought it would be earlier, but, but due to COVID, it got pushed back. So, we are so excited about beautifying and welcoming. I mean, this is like, what, maybe close to 80 garden clubs throughout the state are coming to Vidalia. So, we are just levitating. We're so excited.
Well, good.
And so, that plus, we, the garden club had purchased new flags to go on, in front of the old courthouse when the police jury withdrew from being responsible for those flags. We purchased them and got help from the city to put them back up. And we've also spent money to hot, to light the American flag with a spotlight, but we're gonna be working a little bit more on that. It's not as good as we hoped. So, we are, we are all invested in this. We have about 20 members in the garden club, and we have some new members in the garden club from the beautification committee because we want to work together, together.
I think that's great.
Together.
We think it'll bring more industry to Vidalia also. The prettier the town is, you know, it'll make a good impression.
I think you're right.
And, I mean, we don't want to procrastinate. We want to get busy with this.
Just to clarify, what Sarah's talking about hydro monies, you know, we haven't had our meetings, and I'm planning on scheduling those pretty quick. And we would encourage y'all to be there to certainly ask for some funds to achieve these things y'all want to do.
Okay.
So, go ahead, Sophie, take your way.
Hey, I'm Sophie Weber. I just graduated from Cathedral this year. I'm going to LSU exactly one month from today. I'm gonna major in landscape architecture, and so to kind of kickstart my learning, I wanted to create an adopt a spot plan for Vidalia. So, for adopt a spot, different groups around the city, like the beautification committee, the Rotary Club, the youth group at the church, they can adopt a different spot that we've picked out around the town and like, keep up with it, make it more beautiful. And so far, the garden club has the fountain, and the beautification committee has the courthouse. And then my parents are gonna be really sad when I leave, so they adopted the pots by the fountain on the riverfront. And so we have the, I've already talked to Mayor Buzz, and so whenever they redo the signs, so the two different Vidalia signs are two spots that someone could adopt. The little strip of grass when you're coming into this facility is another spot. With the funds, a group could adopt the little, when you drive down to the riverfront, the sign, they could buy two pots to kind of upkeep and be by the sign. And then the flower beds in front of the convention center, and the pots on the riverside of it. And, yeah, so those are all the spots. And so I need to go around to different groups and talk to them and see if anyone wants to adopt a spot.
So, didn't y'all also talk about, you know, the pots at each intersection where the,
Yes.
each red light is, that y'all were gonna put one on each corner?
That's another thing. Yeah, that was another thing.
Yeah, that was, you know, that was, they showed me their plan on that. What they're talking about, at each, each red light, there would be some pots that are hanging, and they are, they're, they buy the pots that are self-watering.
Self-watering, yeah.
And they don't require, and somebody going by and watering them, and they gonna be with flowers. It'd be really pretty, and I think, you know, and thank y'all so much. I think this is something that we can finally start looking and seeing, making some changes. And yeah, Cindy, we want to show out for all the ladies, all the garden clubs, but hopefully we can do it before then, and, and there are some spots. And our welcome signs are deplorable. And I think, I appreciate y'all. I've reached out to them to work together, to come up with. I don't want to be the one to pick it. I want you to do it because I, I don't want to be the one to take any, any credit or any criticism. So, I want y'all to do it, and I'm gonna give y'all all the glory and all the claim, uh, claims, so, because I want y'all to do it, and I'm sure you do a wonderful job. And I really appreciate what y'all do for our community as far as doing some of these things, so. But I put them on the agenda so they could go ahead and give y'all a heads up. They're gonna be eyeballing us when we have these public meetings, and I think it's a very, very worthwhile thing that we should do to improve our town. And thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thank y'all. Okay, the next thing we have, on our agenda was, you saw Ms. Cartwright come up a while ago. Ms. Dan White's daughter had reached out to us, you know, Dan was a long time. She, she reached, I'll just read the letter, and then she, I think she's gonna come back. And she said to the town of Viday, Mayor and Board of Alderman, "My father, Daniel White, also known as Dan, was loyal and dedicated to town of Viday employee for 25-plus years. During his tenure with Public Work and Engineering Department, he knew the plumbing infrastructure as a subject matter expert. The family has heard many stories from local officials, ex-colleagues and locals of the department sending PWE employees to find him on his off days, and especially one of his favorite hobbies, fishing, to come and resolve PWE issues. He was a vital part due to his knowledge of the plumbing infrastructure, and I'm requesting that the Mayor and Board of Alderman consider naming something in the PWE department in honor of my father because he was a SME and valuable employee during his years with the town of Viday. I would like to request a vote at the next meeting to allow the Board time for his request. Regards, Ms. Sandra White." So, I read that, and for y'all to take into consideration, you know, what we can do in that regard. We've had these conversations before about, you know, employees and people who work for us who have gone on, and we certainly think Dan deserves attention, so, and I agree with Ms. White that Dan Wood did, he was around and had a lot of knowledge about our, our infrastructure and plumbing, for sure. So, okay, thank you, Sandra. The next thing we have is, and kind of, this kind of overlaps into what the beautification and garden club and them have said. You know, the town of Viday has forever helped different organizations and groups, whether it's helping the rec board with lights, the school board with lights at their school that they can't reach, that their typical maintenance people can't reach. The town in the past has always just done those things. They just did them. In this environment that I'm in, you know, I have done what I can, but I've been very fair about trying to be, do it right. And we have, I think, done it, and we have, you know, pretty well followed that pretty close to the T to keep myself and our town out of trouble. But I want to make it legal to where I want to enter and ask the council to, okay, going into a comprehensive cooperative endeavor agreement between the town of Vidalia, the Concordia Recreation District Number Three, Concordia Parish School Board, Viday Beautification Committee, and the Viday Garden Club to help achieve some of these things, like the hanging of the wreaths at the courthouse, the changing of lights that the, that the, the rec board might not can, they might need, or the high school might need, or just, right now, they need, have a knee down at the junior high, you know, of having us help them maybe just hang, not buy the lights or anything, but just help them with the labor and all to do that. The only thing I would ask that we, you know, put in this is that we get adequate notice, you know, a week or two ahead of time so we can schedule something like that if you do, if there is gonna be a project, or something of that nature. And I know Jeremy's here, Ricky's out of town on vacation or school, I think, and so, yeah, Jeremy had to come and set in this, but Jeremy can tell you that in the past, this was a regular occurrence, but since I've been in office, we have not, that I know of, put a truck on a ballpark or a field or anything to, to put lights up. And, you know, I do, if, I want to help, we want to help, but we want to make it legal. So, I'm doing that, and if it's a benefit for the community and for our citizens, I think we can get this done, and it'd be a good thing to have, just protect all of us involved in it. And I, this time, I'll open it up for discussion for any of the council that might have questions about this. So, is there any questions from the council?
This is a statement we know, you know, it'll have to be written up, as we know, and designated as to what we can do. I mean, I have a problem with it, but we need to write it up, see what we can come up with. I mean, that's up to y'all to come up with.
And in each respective, you know, y'all, like, for example, the beautification, the beautification committee has to have a meeting, and also, y'all, y'all will have to have, Ellen, for example, for the beauti, you'll have to sign off on it, agree into it as well. It'll be a formal agreement between, that council will draw up between each of the respective people who you've got listed here, you know, to do these things. And what it, this is to protect each other, that we don't do something, because when you deal with public funds, and public funds can be public assets, can be public labor. If those are done for private, it's against the law to do those things. And what I'm doing is getting us all, you know, to where it should be. And again, in the environment we're in, that, that people are waiting for somebody to do something wrong, and I don't, I promise you, I'm not going to jail trying, even though I'm trying to do what's right, you know, with my heart. And so, anyway, are y'all okay with this, or do y'all want, do y'all want to okay that and do a resolution to enter to that? And it's gonna be, you know, on a case-by-case basis that we'll look at if they have requests to do these things, or if it's the rec board's got a light out, you know, they need help on. I know right now, down at the old ballparks, I think they said there's a service that's actually exposed, can actually electrocute somebody, you know. Is that, is that true? Jeremy, is there something, a danger down there?
Well, I contacted people to let them know. We had some kids calling, parents actually calling, and said that one of the kids got shot. So, the next day, we went over, and we turned the breaker off, and I'm notified. The party's gave control of that, because we relinquished it around 2016 to them. You know, the, any, any of that, any of the maintenance and stuff, we brought it up to code as far as everything working, and then we relinquished it to them. Since 2016, we have a ton of things, and because of that, it has went into disrepair. They were still using it, and so I did get, so the rec board, they did turn the breaker off, and should have locked it. I advise them definitely to lock it, and so they get those repairs made.
Okay. Can I hear, can I hear a motion that we can, you know, you know, get with council to formulate a comprehensive CEA with each of these organizations? Motion made by Alderman Smith, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Betts?
Oh. We didn't, do we discuss it really?
Okay, we can discuss them. I mean, if the motion's made in a second, so we can discuss, yeah.
But I'm saying. My question is, they need to present something to us, I would think, before we do a resolution or anything else. Let's see what they want. What do they want? I mean, it's not up to us.
I think that'll be part of the thing that would be put together when the council draws up the, the thing.
I mean, it's usually, it's usually dealing with things that they don't have. Honestly, it's usually the bucket truck dealing, but look, I don't want to become, you know, you know, because anything's gonna take time, and we got to make sure we can schedule these things so we can keep our own work up with the town, because we don't need everybody just, you know, oh, we need to check all the lights, you need to turn them, we need to, you know, we, that's not what we're gonna, we're here to do legitimate helps.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What do they want us to do? Each entity, what is that that they want us to do?
Alderman Probst, the best thing I can tell you is we would just have to do our best judgment on what we feel like that is within the scope of what we should do. And I think that we have an idea of that, you know, if you're gonna see, you know, all of our assets out there on one, that's not gonna be that. It's gonna be like, hang, helping them hang, Bobby's done it. He's got a bucket truck to help them hang wreaths on the old courthouse. to help them hang wreaths on the old courthouse, you know, and also the, what do we call the thing, the old thing over by where crab claws and that is, what, what is that actually called?
The toll booth.
The toll booth, okay. You know, and they hang wreaths on that. Though, that's kind of the limited things that, you know, that they can't do physically, you know, that we'll do those type things. And, you know, it's not going to be anything that they can do themselves. I can promise you that, that we wouldn't, you know, that we're not going to spend it that much.
There are some things we can do on the ground.
Well, I mean, I'm understanding that. I'm just saying, I'm, my thing is, what do you need as per your many years of experience of what you can't do? I mean, that'd be something that would be presented.
I would think they would check this. It would. Constantly, I don't think you could.
But there, there's limitations to what we can do also.
But that's like, that's like Buzz said, I mean, if it's something we can help them with. I don't think you can list each and every.
But there's limitations as to what you can do, is what I'm saying. So let's see what they want to present to us, what they want us to ask.
If you can say, I can't do that.
Right. That's what I'm saying. Just, just.
We never know what we're going to need.
I know, but I'm just saying, in the past, what have you needed help with? That, just to give us a start, is what I'm saying.
In the past, the beautification committee, Bobby Collins always stood up and hung the wreaths for us on the courthouse, and he's hung the wreaths on the toll booth, the things that we can't get to. He's been.
But, but I'm not, I'm not just talking about y'all. I'm talking about, he's got the garden club, he's got the recreation district, he's got all those people that we're trying to get.
Garden club examples, the flags, the flags.
But I'm saying, but you still, you're lumping this into the recreation board, but they've got, see, the part I got with the rec board is, they are an entity that has money also.
Mm-hmm, they do.
But they don't want to spend it on certain things, like electrical boxes that could kill somebody.
And, and that's what I said, we're, they're, we're not going to do anything like that.
See, we're.
We're.
That's not the kind of stuff we would ask anybody.
No.
It's, it's one of the, like, the example he used, like, we've got lights out at the kind of toll, you know, stuff.
Right.
And so we can't, I mean, that's.
That's what I'm saying, just, I'm concerned more about y'all than anybody.
Yes, sir.
Because y'all have fun.
Yes, sir.
Why ain't that box fixed?
It's locked right now.
But how come it wasn't checked? That's, that's the problem, and I'm hearing from more than one person. It's not about them as much as it is about y'all. About how much we're not doing as a rec board that we're expecting us to do as a city. And that, that has not just started.
Yeah, no, it hasn't just started. You're right, there is a, there's a big disconnect there.
Big disconnect.
Those are things that, and I can just tell you, those are things that I've been working on personally myself. I've run Robert's, and I was kind of brought on by the rec board to help them and all that. There's, I've told you, I've done a lot, there's not policy, procedure in place for very much stuff. There's a big disconnect between the boards, the leagues, hours, the council, I mean, there's a lot of disconnect.
And that's the problem, that's the problem I've got more than anything else. It's not about the other people. And we're going to lump it all together with the rec board.
Who's rec board meeting?
Huh?
Go to the next rec board meeting.
I've been to rec board meetings, Brent. Hey, Brent, I've been to rec board meetings. I've been there, and I've got a bad rep. Right?
Sure you have.
I'm not saying about you, I'm saying, I've been there. I've been there, done that.
I think.
And I'm going back, believe me.
Why?
I will come again.
One, one at a time. Go ahead, Grant, go ahead.
But I tell a lot of people that there have been things done a certain way for, for the last ten years, and even longer than that, honestly, because I'm kind of looking, my, my focus is more here now.
Right.
But I want to talk about what we can do, and, and a lot of that, I probably, there's a lot of things right now, there's a lot of good things happening.
I mean, I know, I know that, but I mean, a lot of bad things are happening in the past.
Yes, sir.
I would like to think that, I mean, we, we have, I don't think the rec board has asked us on those fields at all in the last, since I've been in office. And all I'm saying is, if there's something, I, I would like to think that, that I could have enough, just enter to a cooperative endeavor agreement with them, that if there's, there's something within the scope that they can't do, whether it's just, you know, whether it's to use a bucket truck to maybe fix a light or, or do something like that, we're not talking about buying anything, buying any materials, we're strictly talking about maybe helping them change a light. If they're having a big tournament, state tournament, and they, and they have something they're up against a gun about, and they got a, something that's broke, you know, we would go in and we would maybe bill them, you know, to do work, to get things, to, to make our town more efficient and more something that's, that's going to bring people back to our town. And that's what I want to see us do. I don't think they can list everything that they know is going to go wrong to put it in there, and we have a check off list.
I wasn't talking about everything. I said, get a start of what you might need. Now, this is my question. Why did we relinquish it, Jeremy? Why did we relinquish it in 2016? Because it wasn't right, right? Absolutely.
Those are the casualties that led to the state.
Right.
It was, you know, becoming a money game.
And it's, and again, I would, I would hope that we have exhibited very good constraint on not doing things wrong. In that case right there, if there's a danger there, we know, we would go to the rec board, we'd call them up, I would call, you know, James Thomas, say, James, y'all got an issue down there, y'all need to fix. And we would, we would not take responsibility with that unless there's a danger to a kid. I don't want that on my conscience. If something is a danger, we're going to go down there and, and fix it and send them a bill. And I don't think that's, the rec board will have any problem with that, but if it's just something to help the, the rec board and all those kids, because I can tell y'all, this year, on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, I don't care where they came from, but you couldn't find another place to put a car or people, and guess what? Those people were spending money in our town. And I don't, I, I thought it was wonderful what we, what went on down here this year, and I really, and it has been for years. All I'm saying is, I think that if we, we convolute this thing too bad, that we're going to, you know, I think that we'll handle it one at a time, and if anybody has any questions about it, I, I think that we're big enough and experienced enough to not do something we shouldn't do. I just.
That's really what's made our town so great, is just we want us to help each other. You know, that's what it ought to be about.
The other, other thing is, this is the other thing that I've had a lot of comments from people about. We've got a fine park out here, but nobody can play on it except baseball when they have a tournament. No kids, nobody can get on it. That, they want me to tell them why, I don't know why. I tell them, go to the rec board meeting, and I don't, I can't tell them that.
Yeah, no, there was a big, there was a big statement about that.
They still can't get it, it's locked gates, you know?
We often, we, we put out a statement, invited everybody to the rec board meetings for a good show.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't have a concern with it, because I don't have, he is really the goer, but there should be some parents that storm y'all.
All of this stuff.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't want to get off, that's that, that's, that's the leagues, and that's, just clarify.
That's rec board.
And, well, I mean, but that's the rec board league, and just for clarif, for clarity on that, the town will maintain those fields. I won't, which the town has nothing to do with who gets on those fields, I don't, I don't, I don't want that responsibility. I'm going to let the rec board handle that. Who goes on those fields, when they go on them? The town is out of that. I don't even want to get in that discussion in here, because.
But I'm just saying, in the past, it has been determined by an individual that said they couldn't be on those fields, and you know that. So my point is this, I don't have a problem with it, but y'all are not, they're not my concern, it's you guys. And again, and I will be back to rec board meetings.
Okay, all right. Would somebody like to make a motion that we, that we go in and we draw the?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Probst, I hear, second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's move. All right, we have, the next thing, we're getting close to the end, is.
I think you already had a motion in second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't want to do that.
Yeah, he had a motion.
I backed that up.
All you need is a vote.
Yeah, all we need is a vote, I'm sorry. And back up to that original motion and, and second, so, sorry about that. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Of what we, what we voted on?
Yes, we're, we're going, we're going to draft cooperative endeavor agreements with those different entities, or subdivisions, political subdivisions, or otherwise, you know, to be able to do some work, and we will specify the, the scope of that work in, in the agreement, and it will be things, and we will, for example, with each one, we'll, we will make it tailor-made, for example, with the one with the beautification committee to be, to help them maybe put lights on a tree if they need a bucket truck, help them do that with, or hang wreaths, you know, we'll, we'll have a scope of work that we can do for them.